All right, it's 5:30, so I will call the meeting to order. If everybody could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everybody who is here tonight. It looks like we've got ourselves a packed crowd. And thank you to those who are online as well, watching from afar. We appreciate it. First, we will jump right into some very important special recognition. We have a couple items. So first, we'll start with National Board Certified Teachers. Dr. Tom Brilhard, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So this is such a wonderful topic. We decided to do it in two board meetings in a row. So now, unfortunately, we had a few folks that we missed off our list from our last board meeting, so we respectfully obviously wanted to give them the due diligence and recognition that they deserve for this prestigious recognition. So of course, again, I'll kind of go through this PowerPoint very quickly. This is exactly the same. Obviously, we've got some new names on the last slide. But again, our National Board Professional Certification. Again, it's a National Board Certification that is equivalent to anything that can be done and applied to all 50 states in the Union. And it's a one-to-two-to-three-year process that, of course, requires different components centered around content knowledge, differentiation of instruction, teaching practices and learning environment, and effective and reflective practitioner. Very strenuous process. And of course, the five core propositions that each candidate has to apply by is: Proposition number one, teachers are committed to students and their learning. Proposition number two, teachers know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students. Proposition number three, teachers are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning. Proposition number four, teachers think systematically about their practice and learn from experience. And proposition number five, teachers are members of learning communities. And some of our new names that made our list, Ms. Kristy Young, Ashley at Canyon View Elementary, Ashley Jansen from Chinook Middle School, Danielle Merriman from Eastgate Elementary School, Lacey Vindari, hopefully I said that correctly. So yes, Chinook Middle School, and Lieutenant Colonel Curtis Witchers from Kennewick High School. So I know we do have some folks in attendance tonight with their families, so we would love for you to come up, get a picture, get recognized for your accomplishments on behalf of Kennewick School District. We thank you for your dedication to education. And that being said, bye.
Ladies, so much, congratulations.
What their concentration area was?
So not to put anybody on the spot, but if you guys want to share maybe just a little bit about what your focus was on your journey through the National Board Certification, maybe some of the probes, the tears that were associated with it.
Can you come up to the mic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Jansons. My National Board was for literacy in middle school level. I worked on SCRISE seminars. I worked on getting kids engaged in taking self-efficacy and just taking teaching to that next level.
Thank you. Awesome.
Hi, my name's Lacey Vindari, and my certification is in English Language Arts for Adolescents and Young Adults. It was a four-year process for me. It started at Southridge High School and finished while I was at Chinook Middle School. And it was a great opportunity for me to reflect on my teaching practice and really evaluate my practice and what I could do to be better as a teacher for my students.
Thank you.
And I'm Danielle Merriman, and mine was early literacy for early childhood. And it took me a year that was very stressful, but also just so rewarding in growing students academically.
Is that all you got?
That's it.
Okay, perfect. Done. Ladies, thank you so much. We truly appreciate your dedication to our students and this process. We know it's a long time coming, so thank you very much. Next up, we have Education Support Professionals Week. Dr. Pierce is going to lead us through that.
Yeah, we've got a few fun things to celebrate this evening. So I would like to start with recognizing our education support professionals because it is Education Support Professionals Week. And we have a little video to show, and I think I'll show that first because we have a tradition here in Kennewick where we go out and deliver cakes to the schools and sites for our education support professionals. So this year, we got some good pictures and had our communications team, Robin, put together a nice little video. And then I've got a proclamation to read. So I just have the video. Here we go. So you can see, we've got an amazing team here in our district and a variety of roles and responsibilities that our education support professionals fulfill. So I would like to read now Governor Bob Ferguson's proclamation. Whereas education support professionals are involved in nearly every aspect of education, maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classroom, providing over 60% of all instructional hours to students with special education needs and those learning English as a second language, administrative support functions, safe transportation, a secure and healthy environment, and many other specialized services. And whereas these dedicated individuals deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they do for this state, their communities, and the students enrolled in Washington's public schools and universities. And whereas there are at least 70,000 education support professionals working with and helping children in Washington's public schools and universities. And whereas education support professionals are instrumental in fulfilling the state's responsibility to educate all students. And whereas by supporting the learning environment, education support professionals are crucial partners with teachers, parents, administrators, and school boards. Now therefore, I, Bob Ferguson, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 10 through 14, 2025, as Education Support Professionals Week in Washington, and I urge all people in our state to join me in this special observance. So we sure appreciate all our KSD education support professionals, and if you could join me in giving them a big round of applause.
Great. Next, we'll move on to Association of Washington School Principals Assistant Principal of the Year. Dr. Pierce?
All right, well, we have some really exciting news to share and a couple special guests who are here to help us celebrate. And we're celebrating Dr. James West, who's the Assistant Principal at Cascade Elementary, because he has been named the Association of Washington School Principals, or AWSP, Assistant Principal of the Year. So, Dr. West, we're going to have you stand up for a moment. And we're going to have Dr. Nelson stand up as well, who is the principal at Cascade Elementary. And these two make an incredible team over at Cascade. And so I want to read to you what the AWSP media release said about James. And Julie was a big part in helping James be nominated and recognized. So let me share with you what they had to say. Cascade Elementary's Dr. James West has been recognized as the Washington State 2025 Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year, an honor that reflects his exceptional leadership, commitment to student success, and dedication to fostering a positive school culture. For the past six years, Dr. West has played a pivotal role in transforming Cascade Elementary into a welcoming and student-centered learning environment where every child feels valued, supported, and empowered. His leadership has driven initiatives to improve school-wide safety, strengthen student attendance, and implement a robust Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PBIS, program. Beyond his work within the school, Dr. West has been instrumental in building strong partnerships with families, staff, and local organizations. His passion for inclusive education is evident in his advocacy for special education students as well as his dedication to coaching teachers and staff to support all learners effectively. One of Dr. West's most impactful contributions is his leadership in organizing Wellness Night, an event that unites over 50 community partners to provide essential resources for students and families. His ability to connect and uplift the school community has earned him widespread admiration. "Dr. West is more than deserving of this honor. He puts students first, builds meaningful connections with families, and continuously strives to make our school a better place for all," shared a colleague. "With a deep commitment to creating equitable opportunities and fostering a culture of belonging, Dr. West exemplifies the role of a student-centered administrator. His leadership has left a lasting impact on Cascade Elementary and beyond, making him a well-deserving recipient of this prestigious award." And here in KSD, we couldn't agree more with all of the words shared here. And we're just so proud to have you as a member of our team and sincerely congratulate you for this honor.
Yeah, right in the middle, we'll step to the side a little bit. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Congratulations. All right, so that concludes our special recognition. We will now move forward with communication from parent, staff, and district residents. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I'll make that motion. I move to dismiss Dr. Josh Miller and Annie Maltoz from today's meeting.
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion. Patty, with the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So now we will move to communication from parent, staff, and district residents. The Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parent, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and learn. Please know the board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, remember your words have impact, not the school district. Or sorry. Please remember that your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate rights of others under various laws, including protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. Guidelines for addressing the board. So those of you online who have signed in, you'll have two minutes. There will be a stoplight on the screen. Yellow reminds you you have one minute left, and red, obviously a stop. And we will call you to the center podium here. First, we will start with, I believe we have two speakers online, so we will start with them. So Joseph?
Hey, Thomas, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, you can introduce yourself and give your comment.
Thank you. This is Thomas Caliato, and I'm making comments for both my wife and myself. My wife Lita and I have been residents of Kennewick for 47 years now and have had our two sons educated through the Kennewick School System. We both are very concerned at this point in time that in some parts of our nation, and particularly also in Washington State, through the direction of Superintendent Rick though, males are being permitted access to girls' locker rooms and restrooms and also are permitted to compete on girls' athletic teams. This is terribly unfair and discriminating to all girls in our state and violates their rights to privacy. Therefore, we urge our Kennewick School District Administration to ban all biological males from girls' sports, girls' locker rooms, and girls' bathrooms. Thank you for taking your comment.
Thank you, Thomas.
Well, Annette, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, you're going to give her a public comment.
Great, thank you so much for a minute of your time. I just want to recognize, I appreciate the board's efforts, especially in this time where we're going to be having to take many cuts in budgets, and it's a real painful time, and I just really appreciate you guys doing what you're doing. I just want to give just a statement about schools and challenging schools trying to attract high-quality educators. The National Board stipends is a big incentive for high-quality educators to stay in these challenging Title I schools because they can get some extra compensation because they know that these challenging schools require more time and effort for teachers to put in, of course, to get struggling students kind of up to grade level and to also plan challenging extensions for students who are on grade level. And it doesn't mean that all educators don't work super hard, but it's going to be a little harder, it's going to be a lot harder honestly for these challenging schools, Title I schools, to attract high-quality educators without some competition, without something like, it's a good draw to kind of be like, hey, we appreciate what you're doing. So if they can have a set aside, they can petition the state at all, letter, you know, some funds compensate educators that have gone through this extensive, expensive process to get National Board certified, to also want to be able to like stay in there and we're really rooting for these Title I schools because, you know, they need, these kids need as much support as they can get. And we, as educators, we want to do what we can. That would just, I think, really help a lot of the struggling schools. Thank you. I appreciate you guys for your time.
Thank you, Annette. Appreciate your comments. That's everybody for online. Perfect. We will move into those in attendance. Sylvia Loosvelt is up next.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Annette. I'm sorry. You just start talking.
Okay. I just wanted to comment on the same topic as the first gentleman. I am a beneficiary of Title IX. Before I went into high school, we had no girls' sports. Because of Title IX, I was allowed to play sports in high school. And that's always meant a lot to me. My daughter went to school here all through her years of school in Kennewick School District, and she played middle school and high school sports here without worrying about having other sex be in her girl spaces or having to compete against any one other than girls. And I have two granddaughters who are coming up who are both interested in sports. And so I just wanted to come and just make a statement and urge the school board to please, you know, stand up for schools or stand up for girls and their spaces and their sports because it's an issue of fairness and safety. And I just really appreciate what you all are doing to help girls in this area. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. It's just a little blue. I'm not sure if that means it's still connected. Like just, if someone's on the phone, it might be awkward speaking right into the... Okay, all right. It could be awkward hearing the phone at the same time. All right, next up, Paul Yeremesku. Thank you for the assist. I appreciate it. Come on up, Paul, you're up.
Paul's seen that before. Wouldn't you start? Good evening. My name is Paul Yeremesku. My wife and I, we homeschool. And when I've heard that Kennewick School District has armed security guards, I was so happy that I know that if I decide to go back sending my kids to school, they will be safe. I've seen some other schools that did, went in a different path, and by my estimation, was the wrong way to go about it. And I also would like to encourage the school board to hold the Title IX, keep the boys out of the girls' restroom. They deserve protection. And our security guards won't be able to do the entirety of their job. They have to go into one or the other. They're not supposed to be going into it. So that all ties in. And I would like you guys to encourage, keep up the good work that you guys are doing. My wife and I are really trying to go back getting our kids in school. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We appreciate your comments. Next up, Tina Gregory.
Hi, Tina Gregory. I just wanted to come also today and talk about you being advocates for our girls and actually protecting them. And I'd ask you to please keep the boys from playing sports and being in the locker rooms with them. And I also want to thank you for being the lead and leading the way with the education that you seek out for our kids. You're going above and beyond all the other schools around, and we really appreciate it. And along with the gentleman before me, my whole family homeschools because we've given up on public school. But you're all an inspiration to us to get our kids back into a public school. Not quite yet all the way there, especially when we got to have boys in our locker rooms. And so when it comes to public education, I just thank you, and I hope that you keep pushing, and we'll make education great again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Next up, Rama Devagupta. There's multiple writing in the same spot.
Good evening, Dr. Pierce. Good evening, board members. I am here today to express my sadness at the state of education in how teachers are not receiving the respect they deserve. I'm a National Board Certified Teacher from Southridge High School. Thanks to National Board, a lot of opportunities were opened for me. Washingtonians agree that our children need a high-quality public education that gives them the freedom to pursue their dreams. But the recent proposal to cut the pay of some of the most highly-trained teachers would undermine teaching and learning. Studies show that students of National Board Certified Teachers can learn as much as two months of additional content in a school year, even more for students in low-income schools. Let's help our children build a bright future. Let's not cut pay from teachers. This is what I want our board and our superintendent to consider. Tomorrow, the Washington State Legislature House of Representatives Ways and Means Committee is having a meeting, they're having a hearing, talking about cutting the National Board stipend, which has been in place since 1999. In Washington, as of today, we have 8,600 National Board Certified Teachers. 11.1% of our teachers are NBCTs, and in Kennewick School District, we have the same percentage. Many of our teachers are in high-powerity schools. Our teachers spend 400 to 500 hours of personal time and their personal resources to achieve this certification. We are talking about merit. Five years ago, six years ago, before COVID, in my classroom, when I asked students, "How many of you want to be teachers?", I would see seven, eight students raise their hands. Today, hardly one student raises his or her hand. This is a reflection of how poorly the teaching profession and educators are perceived in today's world. I ask you, as board members, to step up and make our voices heard. And finally, I would like to say that there are teachers who are depending on the 11,000-plus funds from a high-powerity school to make ends meet. If this budget goes through, our teachers in the high-powerity schools will move away. And our teachers in our regular schools may give up the teaching professionals given the state of affairs. So once again, if we really want our students to excel, I need, on behalf of KEA, WEA, and all the teachers in the state, to make your voices heard. Tomorrow, House and Ways and Means Committee, please make your voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you happen to know what the bill is, the House bill or the Senate bill?
This is our legislative right here.
I like, my entire life right now is just following these things, and this is the first time I've heard of it. Do you know what the number is?
Can I email you? Yes, I can. I don't want to give you misinformation.
Yeah, it's easier to find the schedule and everything if I know what the bill number is.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Gled.
And Dr. Pierce will look into it, make sure we get the info too, so we can review it. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Next up, David Comstock.
Good evening, board. I'm here to speak to you in regard to Title IX. We have a very, very strong county school board that took the initiative and stood on solid ground in pushing back. We have an executive order, Mark, current president, that is standing as we speak. You have the obligation to stand with this and to push back and to join forces with Need School District. Based on Section 6, Article 6, Section 2 of the Constitution, whenever there's a conflict between state and federal law, federal law wins. It is wrong that our state officials are pushing back on you to violate your constitutional rights, to make you break the law of their state in a battle between federal and state. This is something that you need to stand up and push back against. We have a responsibility to our women and our girls in our schools. It is very clearly defined in his EO. They are not to be allowed in girls' restrooms. They are not to be allowed in girls' sports. And they are not to be allowed in girls' locker rooms. You have to stand up with these school districts and get the other school districts within your realm to stand with these people. The fact that they have threatened you with removal of your funds from a state official is criminal. And you have legal representation. They are not there to advise you. They are there to defend you. That means you need to stand up and take a firm stance against... That means you need to stand up and take a firm stance against this. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up, we have Kimberly Price.
Good evening. I wanted to make a comment on behalf of a large group of parents about why student athletes should have their PE credits waived. If a student is actively participating in a school sport, they are already meeting, if not exceeding, the physical activity requirements that PE is designed to provide. High school athletes spend countless hours training, conditioning, and competing. Their workouts are more intense and specialized than what they would experience in a general PE class. Since the goal of PE is to encourage fitness and an active lifestyle, it makes sense to recognize the student athletes are already achieving it through their sport. I know there is a worry that waiving PE credits for athletes could impact PE teachers' roles, but I don't think that is the case. Many of these student athletes sign up to take the district competency test to get credits waived already, so those same students won't have to miss their practice to come to the district office at the appointed time to take the test. Plus, there will always be students who don't participate in sports and still need PE to fulfill their activity requirements. PE teachers will always be essential in educating all students about lifelong fitness and wellness. Waiving PE for student athletes isn't about removing the importance of physical education. It's about being practical. It gives student athletes the flexibility to take another academic class, an elective they're passionate about, or even a study hall to help balance their demanding schedules. Student athletes are already putting in the work. Recognizing their commitment by waiving PE credits allows them to use their time more effectively while ensuring all students still receive the education they need. And I recognize that doing one sport one time should not count as all three semesters or the 1.5 credits required for PE, but maybe receiving a half a credit per season would be reasonable. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kimberly. I know we've talked a lot about the waiver, we've done work, and can you update us next meeting?
Sure.
On where we are with all of that? Thank you. All right, and our final speaker tonight, Benson Behan?
Yeah.
Behan, perfect.
Howdy, guys. My name is Benson Behan. Thank you for holding this forum today, and thank you for Micah for signing me up, and I'm just going to wing it. I'm here today introducing the Farm to School and Nutrition Cooperative Program to the board as a solution for our current nutrition system and hopefully a way to connect with the larger agriculture community as a whole. Just want to hand out a few of these packets to the board, and I hope these packets can lead to some real change. Thank you, guys.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thanks, Benson.
Good job, Benson.
Benson, you could even drop them right there on that. Oh, you're up?
Yeah, we'll share with Dr. Miller. All right, so that's everybody we have tonight signed up to speak, so we appreciate the community's participation and their words. Next up, we will move to consent items, and I will take a motion to approve those consent items.
I will make a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
Thanks, Mike. Patty, in the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Oh, sorry. All right, next up, we will move to communication follow-up. Any anything there, or should we just jump right into your report?
I think we can jump right in.
Jump right into your superintendent report.
Great. Well, I want to start with what I think Annie would have reported on had she been here tonight, because we did have our meeting today, Superintendent Student Advisory Council. And this was a meeting where we invited all the high school principals and a number of district administrators, Matt Scott, Alyssa St. Hilaire, Robin Chastain, BJ Wilson, everyone really who has a role in helping educate and communicate about opportunities for high school students. So we've been talking a lot over the past several years about communication and how students get information, how families get information about not only credit requirements, but things like PE competency and computer competency and running start and all of the different opportunities. And so we really spent the meeting listening to our high school students and what they shared from their perspective is challenging, where they see the challenges, what ideas they have for making improvements. It was a really beneficial session, and as the board knows, we're working this year looking at high school schedules, looking at opportunities, circling back on the financial literacy conversation and high school and beyond, and how are we getting kids and families the information that they need to make good, informed decisions about course-taking so they're really aware of all of the different opportunities for flexibility within the 24-credit framework, how they are learning about financial literacy, financial aid, completing the FAFSA, all of those things. So we've been doing that work this year, and we're really going to take that feedback from the students to help as well. And our recommendations coming back to you in May. If you remember, because the legislature had not moved forward with the financial literacy requirement, the board kind of sent us back to the drawing board to say, why don't you take a look at the high school schedules and see if there's different ways to think about course-taking or, you know, different ways of incorporating the financial literacy requirement into our existing framework? So anyway, I've got more, we'll have more to share in May. Really good meeting, though. A couple of other things I wanted to share, just a shout out to Amen Creek and to Lincoln Elementary, because I had recent visits there that were very good. Always appreciate, not only the teachers, I always highlight the teachers, which of course, we love our teachers and we love our certificated staff, but we also love our principals, and we have really amazing administrators, not just at these schools, but at all of our schools. And, you know, as board members know, when you go to visit schools, the principal or the assistant principal and the assistant principal sometimes are there helping to explain the program and how things work. And so I just want to also, in addition to our classified staff and certificated staff, just really highlight our administrative staff. And, you know, we've got lots of well-deserving assistant principals and principals that I think all should be nominated for Assistant and Principal of the Year. Anyway, I also wanted to highlight, you know, we've talked a lot about the amazing shake and what an awesome event that is, and because many of us have had the experience, there's events like that. I mean, you heard me talk about the ONE Cascade. It's a little different kind of community event. But I wanted to highlight Vista's recent event, and I wasn't able to attend this year because I had a conflict with another meeting, but I attended the last time they did it, which I think was two years ago, and it's a time travel night through their Kids at Hope program. And I just wanted to highlight a little bit about what it's about. It really connects, our focus is on helping students think about their future. So it's tied in directly with our goal to help students be ready for their future. It's tied in with what we're trying to accomplish through our learner profile. It has students really thinking about home and family, education and career, community and service, and hobbies and recreation as they envision their future. And so to prepare for this night, students learn about careers, hobbies, and other, what they call, future destinations, again, thinking about all these different aspects of their future life. They create dreams and aspirations for their future plans and identify who in their, like, sphere can help support them in accomplishing these desires and what traits they need to focus on to be prepared. And then they have over 20 community presenters representing each of these areas there in classrooms. And like I said, I couldn't go this year, but the year that I did go, it was just bustling. The school was bustling with activity and community partners and students engaging in different kind of simulations and activities, and it was just really amazing. So I wanted to take a couple of minutes to highlight that event as well, because we do have amazing things going on in all of our schools.
Did we get an invite to that?
I did. I got a paper invite. Did you guys get an invite to it? Okay, you know what I'll do is I'll make sure that moving forward, you get an invite to it, too. It might be on the school event. Yeah, and I'll make sure. And then just a couple of the things, the 52nd Annual Regional High School Art Show was last night at CBC, and so superintendents from all of the schools go and help recognize teachers are there and students and families. We each get to pick out, superintendents get to make a superintendent's choice award each year, so it's so hard because you go and you walk through the entire art gallery, and there's amazing art from all of our high schools, and you only get to pick one. So it's really challenging, but we persevere. And this year, I selected Renee Paulson's piece called Joy. She's a Southridge High School student, and she had a number of pieces, just like many of our students did, but it was really a wonderful event. And also, Central Washington University is there giving people scholarships as well. So it's a great night. That was last night, so I just wanted to give a shout out to our amazingly talented students and teachers and all the great art.
Will that be on our social media?
Yes, we will be highlighting all of that on the social media, and you'll get to see the pictures and so forth. And then, I guess on a sad note, to end on a sad note, I just wanted to share a couple of passings that have connection with our district. So former Benton County Sheriff, Captain John Hodge, who served on the KSD Board for six years, beginning in 1995, he passed away suddenly on March 6th. And so that was highlighted in the newspaper. I did not know him, unfortunately, and never got the pleasure of meeting him, but I just, you know, he was a former board member, and on behalf of our district, I just wanted to express our sympathy to his family and recognize his service to our district. And then we had another unexpected passing with a connection to KSD, Jerry Ringwood. He unexpectedly passed away on Wednesday, February 26th, and he served as the Director of TRITech starting in May of 1997. Paul Randall, current director, shared that he hired, that Jerry hired Paul. And then after his retire, after Jerry's retirement in June of 2013, he continued to serve as a consultant for TRITech Capital Projects up till last year.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so he had a really profound influence on many district staff, TRITech staff, students, and families. So I also just wanted to express our sympathy to his family and recognize his service to our district as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, you're up.
Just very quickly furthering on Mr. Ringwood, he was actually my wife's FFA teacher when she was in high school, and very, very close to him, and just absolutely thinks he was one of the most spectacular people in her life. I mean, she views him as a mentor, and she is just absolutely crushed by his passing. So again, I never had the pleasure of meeting him, but April thinks he is, walks on water. So as far as, I've not done any school visits this week, but I did spend quite a bit of time at the Capitol here last week, so I know I watched our legislative legislature in action, both good and bad, but it's, I know our legislators are working, working very, very hard to hopefully stop some of these bad bills coming through. I know they're fighting the Parent Bill of Rights here today, and that's going on as we speak. So they are working very hard to try and mitigate some of the issues we see coming. So anyway, that's it.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Brittany?
Yes. I had the chance this weekend, on Saturday, to attend the Regional Destination Imagination Competition. Destination Imagination has been a program that I'm only kind of recently familiar with. Alyssa has been helping me understand the program. I really became interested in it because I thought it would be a good fit for one of my kids, but then as I learned more and more about it, just wanted to know more about the organization, and Alyssa was kind enough to remember that I had some interest and invited me to come to the competition on Saturday. It was really, really impressive. I was able to attend four different schools' presentations and listen and see the teams present in a number of categories, but unbiasedly, of the four I saw, the best team I saw present was a Kennewick School District team. So I was able to watch the Chinook and Horse Heaven Hills combined team present in the service learning category. These very impressive middle school students had put together a community service project where they were raising supplies and funds for animal shelters to spay and neuter stray pets, and they had to present that in a theatrical, kind of dramatic way, and really did an amazing job. So I would be, I would be happy to attend future competitions and support Destination Imagination any way I can. So I did notice that there's a few of our schools that don't have a team, so I think maybe that's where we need to start working, is what can we do to get those schools that don't have teams, a team? So I was on Tuesday able to go and visit Sagecrest Elementary. I was able to go and visit the classrooms of Mrs. Wine's, I think I'm saying that right, and Mrs. Kramer. Mrs. Wine's, I had met her at the ELA adoption night, and she'd invited me to come and actually observe her teaching with the new CKLA curriculum. So I was able to go and spent about 30 minutes in each classroom on Tuesday morning and was very impressed with what I saw. I was, actually, before I even entered the classroom, Ms. McKay, there happened to be a fourth grader just outside of the classroom, and Ms. McKay had me ask her a number of questions about what she thought about the CKLA. And just there in the hallway, she was able to walk me through their geology unit they'd had just a couple of weeks ago, and some of their personal narratives. In the just maybe five minutes I spoke with her, I could tell that, in fact, actually come to find out, this student started off the school year not speaking much English, and we had a very robust conversation about what she'd been learning. It was amazing. Anyway, and was also, Mrs. Kramer did a great job of showing me how she was taking the CKLA curriculum, linking it to the SBA standards, and how she was using STAR to assess whether or not it was, it was a great visit. So I did later that day log into the Future Ready State Board of Education discussion that Ron had told us about when he visited two weeks ago. So that was informative to just get a pulse for different constituents around the state and what everyone's thinking and what they'd like to see out of education. So have some legislative updates. Things are, like Mike said, things are changing as we speak, literally as we are speaking right now, things are changing. So just some updates as far as bills that concern strictly education. We have, I mentioned two weeks ago that it looked like we were going to lose momentum on student transportation, and that did in fact happen. Any bills that were related to student transportation have died. So we have two of our big three left that we're still hoping to get some good legislation and some good funding out of. There's two bills in the House, one related to MSOC and one related to special education. Unfortunately, they have both gone through the amendment process enough and have significant cuts to them. They're actually really nowhere near what we originally started asking for. So I don't know that it's necessarily a wholly positive update, but they haven't died yet, so that's good. So they're still being discussed. The state is keenly aware that they need to fund education more. We just need them to understand how much more. So if you would like to speak with our representatives, they are having a town hall meeting this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Tri-City Regional Chamber of Commerce. So if you'd like to step in and express your support for this bill that Ms. Devagupta talked about earlier today, or the Parent Bill of Rights, or any of our special education or MSOC funding, Saturday is a great opportunity to be face-to-face with our representatives and tell them how you're feeling. Title IX issues, show up, go and talk to them, 10:00 to 12:00 on Saturday. They will be happy to hear from you, so.
Really quick to further that, I believe you need to sign up beforehand. So I don't know where that is, right? There is a, there's a signup list, so they've actually added another one because so many people signed up.
Okay.
So I will see if I can figure out where the signup is or what that.
Okay, so you might need to look into signing up.
Yes.
And on that note, just, I am so grateful for everyone who came to express their concerns about, you know, a number of issues, so grateful that Rama said something, because, like I said, I'm neck-deep in legislation right now, and I haven't heard of that bill, and I just did a quick look over on WADA. I don't see it on there.
I only learned about it from the article in the Seattle Times that happened to come across. There's a link there, it's Senate Bill 5737, and it's suspending the National Board for Professional Standard Certification Bonuses for Certificated Instructional Staff. So Senate Bill 5737.
Okay.
Through 28, 29 in school year. So they're labeling it a pause.
So it's a suspension?
They're labeling it a pause is what.
Or suspension. Well, it's not going to come back.
So just, I'm not saying one or the other.
Right, but just saying that's how it's being.
The summary of the bill and all. The bill and obviously something like that would impact teachers, especially in rural districts. Small districts would really impact a large portion of their pay.
Okay, yeah. And for those individuals that came to speak on Title IX tonight, I just want to say, I hear you, I understand. I have four daughters and each one of them participates in an individual sport. So, you know, you can talk about biological males in teen sports, that's, there's a different element to that when you get down to the individual sports. My daughters are actually quite incredible athletes, but they do not stand a chance against a mediocre performing biological male. You're right, it is not fair. As far as from a school board perspective, I am spending a lot of time right now trying to wrap my head around what our actual viable options are. It is not as simple as just declaring as a school board that, we actually have as a school board already a year ago declared that we're against it. But as far as actually acting measurable changes, it's not as straightforward as just making it happen. There's enormous consequences to our school district depending on how things go. So I just want you to understand that it's something that's, I can only speak for myself publicly right now, but I'm aware of it and we're working on it.
Okay. Micah?
Thank you, Brittany. Alyssa's always looking out for us, aren't you, Alyssa? Give Brittany that additional information about that. Good job, thank you. Okay. I met with, I just wanted to just throw a little shout out to Alyssa.
I know, she's great.
Because she, you know, helped Brittany out there, so I just wanted to make sure she got that, that's all. I actually had breakfast, I'm not going to say with who, but it was an OG of our district and I had breakfast with this person and it was very nice. And this person told me some really good things to look, look for. I'll tell you later, Tracy, don't worry.
I'll tell you.
And anyway, got had really good, some really cool insights and things that I, that I, I get to go back and look for. So I just wanted, want that person to know, thank you. Went to some public meetings, fantastic. Spent some time also in this CKLA curriculum, asking about it and talking to multiple people about it. From everything that I hear, it seems awesome. I mean, I haven't really even heard one negative thing yet, I have some questions tonight, but it seems, seems really good, so good job. Everybody's put that together. This gentleman back here, I forgot your name, I'll know it, Paul. Thank you. And I think somebody else talked about potentially bringing their, their team, about their, bringing their kids back to KSD. I appreciate that, about our armed guards and, and here you are, we are all, I just want everybody to know that we are doing a survey. We're surveying all, everybody in the community that we can find and about, about reasons why kids are not in our, in our kindergarten school district. So we're looking for those results and, and just during this week, I actually had the chance to, to talk to that group a little bit with that survey and, and try to help them and move it along. So that is something that is on our minds, to making sure that we, that we do take care of the, of the community and meet everybody. I went to the Sedexo Future Chef's Competition, I was one of the judges, there's three judges, it was me and another, another teacher and then, and then the winner from last year, a young man and, and they, all the kids, these kids are in middle school and they're making these like insane complicated things and recipes. It's just so fun to see them and we, I get to go back in the kitchen and watch them just like wheeling and dealing and then, you know, and, and it's funny, I feel like, kind of like Chef Gordon Ramsay, although I'm not a chef, right? But I might go back to them and ask, what are you doing and, you know, and they're, and it's just fun to see these little, these little elementary school kids just like thing here and this thing over here, and then they got their high school kid that's kind of helping them out and it's just really a lot of fun. And so I've done that for a number of years in a row and I really, really enjoy that. I got a, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about how I, I went to Delta High School and I got several letters back. I just want to read one of them. This just, this, this kind of shows that when I went to Delta, we, I was able to interview some kids about future job things. And this one kid sent me back this letter short, "Thank you for spending your time to do mock interviews at Delta High School. I really liked your help and your wordsmiths in my resume." Another kid talked about the resume. Anyway, I just, it just, it's really rewarding and I, these kids are sending these things back to us after we donated a little bit of time. And we have, we have such great kids in our district, really appreciate that. Last thing I, I want to say is about the WIAA, the Title IX with the, the men and women's sports. I'm going to give you my take on this and, and my take is that we are elected to represent the community and we need to fight for our, our students and our kids. And, and that's my take and I want everyone to know that that is my stance. I want to fight. You know, we, it has to be a collective situation with our board, but I'm ready to go to battle for our kids. I do not think that biological males should be in the, in the bathrooms and the restrooms. I do not think they need to be on the playing field with, with, with females. I think that it's our job is to protect kids first and foremost, which is why we have armed guards. And, and I think that in any locker mishap or, or, I know we've had some, some incidents with the students breaking, you know, just tearing ACLs and things, playing with men, just even just some practices and, and I just, and I play college sports and semi-pro and I'm very aware of that difference and I just think that that's something that, my point of view, that we need to stand up and we need to stand up for our girls. We need to stand up for our females, we need to fight for them. And I think that that's an urgent matter, so that's what everybody know. My stance on that, I'm ready to fight yesterday and you have my time with that.
Thank you. Micah, first I want to start off with a little recognition to the board. So over the course of this year, the board has made 34 visits to schools, nutrition services, the bus garage. So I, I think that just shows the commitment from, from all of us as board directors that our, our willingness to get out to the schools, see what's going on, check in, ask questions. Brittany used the example of going and looking at the CKLA curriculum to get a better understanding of that. So the, the work is being done there on the front lines and I just want to commend the board for getting out and visiting those, those schools and those departments. I think we have about 10 left, but if I, I am sure Brittany has most of them scheduled already because she schedules a lot ahead of time. So I'm sure that a board representative will be in every school this year. And so we appreciate the time, the principals and the teachers and stuff put into it as well when we come in to observe in classrooms and stuff. So thank you to all of, all of our staff that, that puts up with this and thank you to you guys for making that a priority. I, I do appreciate it. Quick shout out to, we've had some amazing results recently with FFA. We've got folks in FFA going to state. We've got DECA students who've done very well and there's some, I believe I read, are going to a conference in Orlando. So that's amazing. I don't know a lot about this, but our, we had a knowledgeable team win in their, the regionals and they're heading to state as well. So outside of athletics, we got a fantastic group of, of students who are doing amazing things and other activities such as, such as I just shared about. So congratulations and thank you to those folks. I will, like the others, I dug into the CKLA pilot and I'll, I'll speak more to that when we get to that part and what, what I did to find answers to that. And then a gentleman mentioned that, that Mead had written a letter and they, that, that letter was, that letter's being sent to the Secretary of Education and the, the Attorney General. And that really, that letter highlights the, the request and urgency from their school board in getting some clarification on the legal standing of these laws, EOs, federal law, all that stuff. Because we are in a rock and hard place here with, with the determination of, of law and, and all of that stuff. So, so I actually am, am writing a very similar letter that I am personally going to send to that, those two departments. I will share that with my colleagues on the board. If you want to sign on individually as a board member to that letter that, that I will be doing, happy to have you. But again, it's, it's really around the legality. We, we need some clarity on the legal laws and what's going on here so we can make informed decisions. So I will, I will share that with you guys probably early tomorrow for your, for your view. So that is all I have. Did you, you look like you had a follow, follow up or do you find something?
Well, I hadn't heard, no, well, I hadn't heard anything about Mead.
Okay.
The gentleman mentioned it.
Yep.
Just like the cursory, it looks like they sent, I don't know, we can talk about it. It just looks like they sent their letter to federal government, right?
Correct, they're, they're, they're requesting the federal government to come in and help provide clarity on the laws. So we know, obviously we have to uphold laws, what, what's what. So, so that's what they're requesting. And, and again, federal funding is a portion of our budget, right? I mean, it's about 32 million, so we definitely don't want that withheld down the road for, for violating federal law. So anyways, that's all I have. Dr. Pierce, that wraps that up. We will move into reports and discussions. So we will start with preliminary budget 2526. Dr. Tom Brearheart will be here to share with us again. Oh, no, okay, all right.
Tough grab. Good evening again. There we go. Okay, tonight we are again going to be touching base on some preliminary items. So make sure that again, we stay informed and calibrated as we move through the next couple of months with preparing for our 2526 budget. Very similar to our last meeting, again, the, one of the biggest board roles is fiscal oversight. So again, we will make sure that we respectfully keep the board informed as much as we possibly can with accurate information up to today. And that way obviously we can make the best decisions for tomorrow. Now, in today's presentation, we're going to talk a little bit about some legislative items that are changing as we, as we speak, as noted earlier. We're going to kind of reflect back on the 2425 budget as kind of a baseline to kind of, kind of look back on. And then talk about some anticipated revenue expenditure changes in preparation again for the 2526 budget. But then also again, reflect back on our, our timeline. So full disclosure, some of the things you're going to see in this presentation, there, there's a lot of gaps. There's a lot of holes because again, because of where we're at currently right now within the session. There's just a lot, if we presented numbers today, they're gonna, they're gonna change tomorrow and they're gonna change the next day and they're gonna change the next day. So, so as we go through the next couple of months, that's going to be the task on myself and our department is to make sure that we keep filling in those holes and those numbers with the best accurate, most up to date information that we possibly can. That way when we finally get to our end game in June, again, we have a set budget with again, accuracy and purpose. So, okay. So again, like I said, the session as we all know is in late April. Some, some potential funding impacts that have of course already been discussed with the board. Of course, the IPD is something that we continually will, will monitor and look at. As of right now, the most, most, the House, the Senate and also the governor, their preliminary budgets were sitting about, expecting about 2.4% increase in IPD. Some of the other things that have not been determined yet, which include employer paid rate changes related around insurance and also retirement. Again, that's some things that are in the mix as of right now. Different inflationary increases, again associated with MSOC, as noted earlier by, by Ms. Quatill. That has changed and there's, there's so many different versions of what that change is going to be. And as of right now, just kind of a round estimate that we're looking at, again, and this is probably as dated as when I just said this, is approximately about a 3% increase in MSOC funding potentially. And then of course multiplier changes that are associated with, with special aid, which we'll kind of get to that later, a little bit later in detail in the presentation. And of course, all different under, other OSP funding models will change again, once the, once the session is finally over. Then we'll be able to again, calculate more accuracy on, okay, what, what are those calculations? What are those, those denominations that we have to make sure that we, we take into consideration and ultimately what our sum's going to be? So just again, quick recap for our board, this of course is our 2425 budget. So again, by the time when we get in June, this is exactly what the format will look like. These are the high level categorical budget lines. Of course, the difference will be the numbers and of course the date. So just a couple of things I wanted to highlight, as, as noted earlier, our property taxes, that, that number has increased as we, as we talked about last, last board meeting. That number has increased, so again, our total sum for revenue has increased. Our student enrollment also has went up in, in comparison to what we had budgeted. So again, that's going to impact revenue, as noted in our last board meeting. And also LEA also increased as well. So if you remember, we budgeted last year in the 2425 budget, we, we budgeted an expected deficit of 5.5 million. But as of right now, we're trending at about a deficit of about a million as of right now because mainly of our expenditure is mainly remaining solid based upon what was budgeted. But most importantly, our, our revenues are higher as of right now, so. And here, we're going to start talking about some of these holes and some of these categories that, that I discussed earlier. So, so as of right now, again, I'm going to kind of go back and forth on what I'm currently seeing and again, in preparation for the 2526 budget, which of course, if you think about it, what we, we have, we have a budget this year. Obviously we're going to have a budget in 2526. But the impacts of 2425 have to of course alter our actions in 2526 and rightfully so. So there's going to be a little bit of, a little bit of flipping back and forth through these categorical lines. So basic ed enrollment, again, as of today, again, not knowing, you know, kindergarten classes. But as of right now, to the best formula, best accuracy that we can project as of right now, we're looking at our student enrollment for next year in totality in K-12 to be down in, in the effect of, of about a $300,000 deficit in comparison to this year. Again, that is just as of right now, looking at our current enrollment practices. And again, trending that out based upon a formula that we use again, to try to be as accurate as possible can. So, but again, it changes every single day because kids unenroll and they enroll. So, so again, but as of right now, again, we're looking at about a $300,000 less revenues in that category. Special ed enrollment, as noted in our last board meeting, right now we're about 60 students down in that category. Which again, you can look at that as being negative, you can look at that as being positive. That does mean, you know, that systems are working, including with our RTI process and our PLCs and so on and so forth. We're still trying to determine accuracy for 2526. But again, we're expecting most likely we're going to be in a decrease in, in sped numbers in comparison to this budget year. Okay? Special education formula adjustments, again, as, as noted earlier, again, that's going to change with the session. Transportation funding is also going to change with the session. Inflationary formulas, again, hasn't, hasn't hard lined yet, by no means will change with the session. Employer benefit allocation, as noted before, right now we're spending about $14,136 per employee for, for our contribution for health insurance. We expect that number to go up, just like most insurance costs do. We just don't know what that number is going to be as of right now. Retirement rate increase contributions, again, we're looking at those to potentially decrease, potentially. But again, a lot of, a lot of that to be determined. I mentioned MSOC earlier. LEA calculations, again, that, that is not set either. That will change and of course, with the formula changing and also perceived and assumed, AV is also going to drive that, that, that total allocation change as well. If you, we skip down a couple of lines, as of right now, if we, if we project based upon the last five years of, of AV growth, if you take away 2023 and 2024, which were kind of, kind of just weird years that were kind of obsolete, but not use that as our, our, our five-year growth model. We're still sitting at about an eight, 8.1% increase in AV with those, I guess, last seven years minus 23 and 24. So even with that being said, we're looking at potentially losing about 900,000 in LEA because our AV is going to potentially grow so much. Again, that's, that's as of right now, doesn't mean it's going to happen, but that's just what again, we're projecting. And one thing I did want to note on this EPA levy, Brandon and I, actually this afternoon, we did some more finite math on what we project on our EPA levy for the remainder of 2025. We think we're going to get about 300,000 in, in the good more for 2025, which will impact this budget and of course will impact our, our 2526, half of our 2526 budget roughly. So, so again, that's, that's a good thing noted, I, I highlighted in green, so, you know, in honor of money, so we, we like that. And again, we don't really have any other revenue changes as of right now because again, we're just so, so early in the, in the session. Some other items, so of course, one of our biggest expenses is our staff. It's what we value, that's what makes the difference in our kids. If you noted in the, in the budget page earlier, about 87% of our, of our budget is in staff cost. And that's, that's a good thing because again, that's what, that's what ultimately makes the biggest impact on kids, we all know that. But as of right now, we're looking at our, our expected staffing to go down a little bit because again, our enrollment's going to go down a little bit. So right now, we're expecting, again, this is not, not a riff, okay? This is all through attrition. But our elementary certified staff, K through five, we're looking at a reduction of about three positions, which would be a, a cost deficit of about 381,000. And then our six through 12, middle, high school teaching staff, we're looking at about a, a half a position in, in reduction, which again, is about a 63,000 expense. So again, a lot of these other categories, alternative programs. So again, a lot of these other categories, alternative programming, special ed, as I noted before, other support services. A lot of those items, we're going through that process right now on staffing, okay? Making sure that obviously our buildings are going to be adequately staffed for the 2526 year. And we should have that finalized, probably as of right now, probably the week after spring break. We should have that completely done. There's a lot of moving parts with that. Again, we just want to make sure we're as accurate as we possibly can. And then ultimately, again, how much revenue are we going to receive to make sure that again, whatever we staff is sustainable? Because the last thing we want to do is make a promise that we can't keep, of course. All right. Our certificated classified pools, as of right now, we're planning on budgeting about $450,000 more next year on that pool number, which that does include those categories that you see, overloads, subs, coaches, so on and so forth. Because again, we expect that cost to compound, of course, because that need is not going to go away. Those positions aren't going to go away. So again, we expect that to be about a $450,000 increase. And again, we possibly could have some reallocation of staff cost to other programs, you know, whether they're Fed-funded or LAP-funded or whatnot. Again, those things are going to be moving as we finalize staffing and budgeting. And then again, a lot of those other categories, as you see below, again, are just are unfilled as of right now because again, we just don't have the best data to come to the board with that information. But as presented at our last meeting, our budget revenue expenses, as I noted before, we're looking at about a $1 million deficit to end this year. Just again, because of that increase in revenue that we received this year.
Tom, can I ask you a quick question on that slide? And I just want to be very, very clear. The three positions expected to potentially be reduced is through attrition. Attrition, not rifts. I want to make that very clear. So people know
Yes.
It's not rifts because I've seen random comments online where people said we're riffing people and that stuff. We are not doing that
Yes.
Through attrition. If you have questions or concerns, please reach out because it's not the case.
I appreciate you highlighting that. And let me, if no one knows what the word attrition means layman's terms, what that means, if we have a vacated position, whether it be through retirement or resignation, we will vet that position, knowing in totality that we need to get to a certain number in that subgroup. And simply, it is a shuffle of metrics to make sure that again, that position is basically not refilled. So it doesn't impact a person, it impacts the position. In other words, but thank you for highlighting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're very, very welcome, sir. And in most cases, in elementary, usually, the methodology with elementary, as we know, elementary is a little bit different than secondary because they're literally in cohorts as they move from one grade to the next. And for the most part, those cohort numbers don't change a lot. You know, you may have a 3% fluctuation yea or nay, you know, as they move from year to year. But those cohorts per building don't typically change a lot. So in most cases, what you'll see is a second grade class obviously moved to a third grade class. Well, that staffing need kind of follows them. And then if we have a backfill where the staffing need is not needed in that second grade, well, then there's your attrition right there. That makes sense. So it's just a shift. That's all it is.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
MSOC, as noted earlier, obviously, that is a humongous topic. Right now, the legislative session, again, don't know where we're going to land. So I just wanted to highlight this slide and show the board in preparation of where we want to get to again, by June. And there will be an abundance of fill-in-the-blanks again, once we have better information. But as presented tonight, this is our current 2425 budget with all of these categories. And so as we again, march through the next couple of months, we will continue to fill in these blanks, which of course, will change this row based upon the difference between last year's budget and our next year's budget. And are there any questions?
Any questions? I wish we could have that $8 million increase from MSOC the last four. That would be nice to have in the bank. But you know, hopefully, we see some change there.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And again, just to wrap up, again, legislative session ends on the 27th. Again, we'll go through the next couple of months and then our public hearing for board adoption is June 18th. So please be there.
Perfect.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, we will be diving into our academic progress update. Alyssa St. Hilaire will walk us through it. Thank you, Alyssa.
I think I found one tiny typo at like 5:00 PM. So there's a friends that's different than what you have.
All right.
FYI. Good evening. Great to be back. We're going to have a little mid-year progress report, just how we're doing. Our middle of the year benchmark has passed and we just want to look at that data and see how we're doing. Oh, yep, let's change that. There we go. Okay. All right. So we want, in our strategic plan goals, we want to make sure we're making progress and that our kids are growing and that they're meeting the grade level standards. So we'll go over some of those pieces. I'm going to go through some of these a little bit quicker. You've seen them before and it's a review of our reporting calendar, but please feel free to stop me. I know you've looked at it ahead of time, too. So we're at March. We're going to be looking at how our kindergartners are doing on the WA Kids. We're going to look and see how we're doing on STAR reading and math. We have a little information on dual language and then how we're doing with earning credits towards graduation. So we'll start with our little ones and the WA Kids, the kinder assessment that our students take in the fall. This is just some historical data on how our students are coming in. You'll notice they are a little bit lower this year. This is in six different areas of development. On the OSPI report card, we look and see how we're doing in each of the domains that are along the bottom. And then how our kids are doing, if they're doing well in one domain, two domains, three, four, or five. We like to see how our E cap students are doing, how the TTK or the transition to kindergarten students are doing. So these are students who were in that last year and are now our kindergartners. And then just looking at it again, over time, comparing last year's kindergartners to this year's kindergartners as well. So using all of that data.
Alyssa, real quick, that one column on the WA Kids by program participation, the one that says no E cap or TTK, those could be students that are doing private preschool before they come or potentially nothing at all. So that's
Yes.
In that category.
Yeah. Yeah, we can track the data on E cap and TTK because they're in our systems. Okay, we're going to look at both growth and proficiency for our students. We're going to start with growth. Last year, we were in the middle of a pilot with STAR. Not all of our schools were using STAR yet. And in moving to STAR, when we look at growth, we're going to look at the student growth percentile or SGP. And so just some reminders on SGP, what we're looking for with growth. And I just want to point out, it's a norm reference. So we're going to be looking, say, it's a highly capable class, it's compared with other highly capable students. I also just want to highlight that we're really looking for an SGP of 50. That means a year's worth of growth. We believe we need to make sure kids are growing at least a year, if not more. So our goal is always 50 or more when we're looking at the SGP. So this line has growth for kinder, first, and second grade. There's a lot here because our kinders start out with early lit, which is going to show growth. Once they get past that assessment, they go into STAR reading. So that's one reason the numbers underneath look a little bit different for our kinder, first, and second grade. But we're really looking at this growth over here of our students making that typical growth, that SGP. And then we also have our math on here as well for growth.
Alyssa, can I just tell you?
Yeah, of course.
It's one of the questions I submitted, but I think if you could answer it for me now, I'll understand better moving forward. I don't, do you have a chance to look at one?
Dr. Pierce and I talked, yes.
Okay, so what I'm really curious to understand is, and maybe I'm not understanding the chart correctly, but if I look at the cohort of kids that was in kindergarten from 23 to 24, right? We were, 43% of them were meeting benchmark, were on benchmark. And then if you take and look at them as first graders, well, they, I choose, I choose, that's not English. I chose a poor example because they stayed the same. But how we understand why we don't look at the cohort growth? Why are we fixated on making sure that each grade level is growing by 3% a year?
There's kind of, I think, two different ways to look at it. And I just want to, I brought back the key indicators for the board. So these have evolved over the years and it's really, the board looks at this and tells us, this is what we want you to report on.
Sure.
So when you report on like how our kindergartners doing this year compared to last year, you're really looking at as a system, how are we serving kindergartners or how are we serving first graders? And it helps us go, are there program improvements we need to make for this, you know, particular subject, for this particular grade level? It's more of like a system-wide assessment. So right now, the way our key indicators are set up for board reporting purposes are comparing year to year. When we're looking at clean cohorts of students to say, okay, these students performed at this level this year. How was that same group performing this year? We do look at that, schools look at that, we look at that, but it's not what we're reporting for key indicators for the board. So the board, every year, takes a look at this and says, here's some adjustment we want you to make. If you want us to report that way moving forward, that just needs to be a board conversation and update of this to help, to tell us to do that.
Can you make note of it and remind us to kind of discuss that? That's something I'd be interested to see. I understand the reason for looking at grade level improvement from year to year. But I'm also very interested to see, because there's a drop-off in a lot of these categories going from one year to the next for some of
And in looking, my opinion is, in looking at that view of cohort over time, it's important to have a clean cohort because you've got kids coming in and out and you want to make sure that there's a data point for that student for the one year and then the next year. So you're really tracking a clean group
Sure.
if that makes sense. So we can do that.
The thing I would like to see is, I don't think it needs to be a part of the presentation necessarily, but just to see is school to school. That's what I would like to, I'd like to kind of compare schools to schools and see, that's the biggest thing that I would like. How's the school reading? How's the school reading? That's about, I really want to, I just feel like I don't really have a good idea of which schools are outperforming and which schools are underperforming.
And my advice would be, you know, also, like in doing that, you just have to be careful about demographic differences between schools in terms of income.
Yeah, for sure.
Because there's definitely, you know, big differences in student populations of low-income, multilingual learners and that have direct impacts to achievement levels. And so just, you know, grouping schools accordingly or something. So you're just not coming up with like false conclusions, right? By looking at the data. Yeah.
Real quick, so the numbers in the 23, 24 year, total numbers seem to be lower than the 24, 25. Is that just because most, we had a lot of pilots going on last year? So this isn't truly the entire
We've got
grade level because there were pilots going on. So, okay.
Yes.
So this year's information will be
Good baseline.
Good baseline for, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to keep moving. This is growth for grades three, four, and five, comparing years of typical growth. We've got reading on the top and math on the bottom. Our goal is to increase by 3% each year. We're going to switch gears slightly and instead of looking at growth, spend a little bit of time on the like benchmarking. Last year, when I spoke with the board, there were some good questions in our pilot of are we looking at the right percentile rank to make sure we are understanding of student, how students are going to do on a smarter balance assessment? So between this time last year and the end of this last school year, we worked really hard to better align to the estimated benchmark levels. I'm going to show them to you in a minute. So that's what we're going to be using moving ahead. And that benchmark, the one we're using is if the kid continues to grow at the rate that they are learning right now, how, the projection of how they will do on the smarter balance. And just as a reminder, these levels for smarter balance, the state's really helping us understand that a level two is a foundational grade level knowledge. And we've got a benchmark cut score for a level two, also level one. And then level three is really that proficient grade level knowledge that we're really striving for and our current key performance indicators are aligned to. So here they are for each of the levels. They vary by each grade level of what that benchmark standard is to make. So how they're doing on STAR, we'll estimate how they're going to do on smarter balance. And so we went through last year's slides and corrected the numbers because they were kind of up and down. And then we also just wanted to see like, how did we do on smarter balance? How well did those estimates align? So we did put that number in as well. And we think we're using a better benchmark than what we were using during our STAR pilot. So these are showing how students are doing to meet grade level standard. So this is grades three, four, or five. And then we're going to do the same thing with middle school. This was the first year all of our middle schools took STAR. So it's good baseline again this year for our middle schools. We're back to growth. So we're back to that SGP, making a year's worth of growth here. And we can see how we're doing across the grades. And here's the proficiency. We went back and cleaned up last year's numbers again, so we could see. I do think these are a little misleading because we did not have everyone taking STAR last year. So we should have a better baseline this year. I'm going to take just a minute to talk a little bit about some work in dual language and how we're measuring growth in our dual language program. So for our students who are learning two languages, they do follow a different trajectory than their monolingual peers. They are learning two languages at the same time. So we have to be developing bilingual norms for how we're measuring growth. What a student knows in one language is understood in the other, they need the language to do that. So our dual language students are progress monitoring in both English reading and Spanish reading. STAR is developing some national trajectories and we are part of that work. They're going to release it later this spring, but I'm going to show you where we're looking right now. So this just shows growth of our dual language students in English and in Spanish. There's some great growth across the grade levels. We don't have middle school for last year because both our schools didn't take STAR, but where they're sitting this year. And then I'm going to show you a really confusing one, but this is the trajectory growth. We're looking at how students are doing four different ways. So like, I'm just going to explain a couple of these really quickly. This dark blue would be a home language of English, taking a test in English. Look at that SGP there. This is a student whose home language is English and has taken the test in Spanish. And then the light blue is a home language Spanish, taking the test in Spanish. Again, very high SGP. And then the test, home language is Spanish, but the test is in English. You can see those two middle ones continue to grow. And in fourth grade, where you've started to close And in fourth grade, where you've started to close that gap of what the students know how to do in both languages. So this is how Kennewick is sitting right now. We haven't seen how that compares with the national trajectories yet, but we're excited to see them in May to see, to see, are we on? Where do we need to improve? Okay, I'm going to totally switch different gears. And we're going to talk about a high school on track for graduation. We want to see who, who is on track to graduate. At this time of the year, a freshman needs three credits. A sophomore needs nine to be on track. Grade 11 needs 15 and grade 12 needs 21 or more. So here's where we're at. We see some improvements from last year in a couple of those grades. And then also passing classes from first semester to second semester. And there's some historical data there as well. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time about what we're doing to improve these results, both at the building levels and at the district level. So we did look at the schools individually and the grade levels to say, who's making that SGP in reading and math? And these are schools that have four or more grade levels in elementary who've met that in reading and math. And then also our middle schools as well. So I reached out to those schools to find out what, what are you doing? Well, how are you getting those results? And a lot of it, you can see some themes. You'll see our recommended new ELA adoption. There's some pilot teachers who are getting some results. Our math, you see some work with standards. And what I, what really stands out to me is using data. We are getting a lot more proficient in responding to data and getting students what they need, which is really exciting. I mentioned that we saw some good results and I just wanted to give a preview that's going to become more in-depth in my next presentation. But we did pilot our CKLA material in several spots. And the SGP in those classes was great. It's very promising what we're seeing so far with those pilot teachers. At middle school as well is really embracing those professional learning community practices. When I spoke with these principals, there's a huge focus on standards. And again, they talked a lot about using STAR data and that at the teacher level and the grade level level and the principals, that data is really helping them make sure they're responding to what students need. I also want to point out, and I'm going to go in a little more in-depth, we are doing some work to make sure our teachers understand the rigor of the smarter balance assessments. We, we are offering PD to our math teachers that we haven't been able to offer since before COVID. And what that looks like is there, we are helping our math teachers with what's called a blueprint. So we are making sure our teachers know what is on the smarter balance, what is the rigor on the smarter balance, which, what things to show up multiple times. So if they have to pick and choose and prioritize, they're going to make sure their kids can do these things because it's going to show up on the test. And it is our responsibility to make sure our students see that. We are not doing a, we're doing a disservice to students if we're not even exposing them to them. So this has been great professional development at the district level with our middle school math teachers, especially in algebra. It's gotten really good feedback from principals and teachers. Here's just some examples of things that the teachers are doing and being led by our STEM specialist who's helping with them. It's really helping create some collaboration across our schools as well and seeing what's working and duplicating that in other spots. I'm excited to see how the students do in the spring. So this was just mid-year. I'll be back in May with more STAR data and some of those projections. We won't see smarter balance until August, September.
Any questions before we start the next one? I just have one quick question. And the, the action taken to prove secondary math mastery, this reminded me of it and I don't know if this aligns with it, but when I, when I visit schools, I see all these learning standards posted everywhere in the classrooms, in the hallways and stuff.
Yeah.
I may be ignorant too, but what the heck is the purpose of having those posted? Is it for us as teachers and administrators to look and say, awesome, we have the standards? Do the kids actually, I mean, it's not for the kids, right? They, they're not going to be able to say, this is learning standard 1.2. So I guess what I'm asking is, they, they look great. There's a lot of work that goes into it. I'm just trying to, what's the, what's the purpose?
Yeah. Thank you for asking. The teachers usually in a grade level have mapped those standards out. So it's helped their knowledge of the standards. It's helping them make sure. For students, we need to use success criteria.
Okay.
So in the classroom, we want to see like, I will be able to do this. But you're right, we do not want students regurgitating 1.2 at all.
Yeah, I mean, it looks great. I see everything. But I'm like, what are, like, this looks like it takes a lot of time. So I didn't know like, what, what are we using for?
The teachers might have it up. I know I've seen it in hallways. It's like at Vista, for example.
Yeah.
And they're referencing it. They're going in and just looking at it and keeping it as a living document.
For teacher clarity.
Yep.
And focus. And then like Alyssa said, what you typically see in a classroom is a learning target with success criteria. So then teachers will take an aspect of that larger standard and help students be clear. Like this is what you're learning today. This is what our focus is today. And here's what success looks like once you've understood this concept.
And
That's what you typically see in classrooms.
And I will add too, there's a lot of standards there. And we can't get to all of them or our kids will be with us until they're 21. So some of the work is chunking them together and prioritizing in each grade level, the essential standards that our students have to have.
And that's works also being coordinated at the district level because of course we want to ensure there's guaranteed viable curriculum across the system so that students in all schools are getting the same opportunity to learn those essential standards. So there's a lot of work being done to help the system be clear about what is really important that our students know and are able to do by the time they leave this grade level so they're prepared for the next grade level and that there's a coherent approach.
And I know I've asked this question before. Are those PLCs taking into consideration the vertical relationship? Are they talking to the fourth grade teacher saying, hey, what do they need to learn in third grade?
Yes. And some schools are further along. That, that's the next step. And we have some schools doing a great job. The next, next step is fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth as well. But yeah, we have to have those vertical alignments in place.
Thank you, Alyssa. You're still on the hot seat here, probably. Next up is our preliminary recommendation for the K through five English language arts materials.
Okay. Well, great to be back here with all of you. I'm going to be sharing our preliminary information about our ELA adoption.
Should I see Dave and Jen? Do you want Dave and Jen just to come up here in case they're?
You want to come up?
We've got the experts in the back. You guys want to move up here for a little bit? Come on. Get up here on camera.
At least front row.
Yeah, just in case we need to turn to them for anything. Thanks, Jen.
All right. This year, one of our strategic plan objectives, and I'm going to introduce this awesome leader in just a minute, was to review our materials, strength, including strengthening our knowledge and understanding of science of reading and how that will impact our instruction and this adoption. And then look at a new material for our K five literacy. So I'm going to talk a little bit about materials, evaluation criteria, our process. I really want to spend a lot of time on the material we want to recommend as well and what we learned from the pilot as well. And then find out what, what the board would like to know before the next meeting. The board may remember last June, we updated our adoption cycle. Our ELA materials were sunsetting. So we, we needed to have an adoption to have materials. We also want our learning to be better. And we need to have some stronger, more rigorous instructional materials that are engaging. So I, I'm presenting tonight, but I'm really presenting a body of work that's been led by Jen Jordan, who's our K five content specialist. This work started over 18 months ago. She was joined by Dave Elkins. I, I want to make sure I acknowledge the hard work and leadership that they provided along with Jared Lind and Tina Brewer to really make what I'm sharing with you possible tonight. We've had passionate, very involved classroom teachers, principals, assistant principals. This room's been packed twice a month since September. And so I, I'm honored to be presenting and I want to make sure that the board hears what a collaborative, transparent process this has been to make sure we're getting the best materials for our community. We started this over a year ago with an RFP process just to solicit materials and see what was out there. We developed some criteria that I'm going to share with you in a minute. But this has been a thoughtful, methodical process that began last year. Like I said, we've met regularly. We, we had a pilot and this was a really strong vision of Jen that we have to pilot materials. And she's, she's really helped influence, we won't do any other adoptions without a pilot moving ahead. It's been very powerful and we've been able to really see if we want to proceed with the material or not. We have been working closely with publishers as well. Lots of feedback after the pilot, because we piloted two different materials. We really were in a good spot to build consensus with our curriculum adoption committee. At that time, Dr. Realheart and I worked really hard on negotiations to make sure we had a fiscally responsible contract. And I, I'll talk a little bit about that as well. So last year, we really started with the standards. And we also really wanted to dig into the science of reading. We felt our previous materials, the, the work known as science of reading has really grown and expanded and we've needed to work on our understanding and make sure our materials are grounded in that science of reading. We wanted to make sure we had great flexible supports, both digital and paper, that we had all the materials teachers need so they can present instruction to lots of different levels as well. I mentioned the science of reading. This was probably one of the most important parts of our adoption. Sometimes you'll see the term Scarborough's reading rope, which I like because it shows how complex reading is and what's going on behind the eyes when a, a student is learning how to read. All of these components have to be present all of the time. We can't do it in isolation. We've got, and then you can see the big parts about vocabulary, background knowledge, language. And then you can also see that foundational reading work of decoding, phonological awareness. Both, both are important for reading. If either is missing, we don't create strong readers. Okay, so using that, that research, our team developed a criteria and we would rate, we rated six different materials last spring and narrowed it down to only two had that what we felt was a viable option to even look at in the science of reading. And this is just a screenshot of part of our rating process that we went through. So with that, our committee would like to, not formally yet, that will be in two weeks because we, we go to the instructional materials committee tomorrow. But we would like to recommend Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts or CKLA for our K five ELA instructional material. This is the material we'd like to recommend. It's grounded in the science of reading. It's got great building blocks for foundational skills. It builds background knowledge. There's lots of emphasis there. In science, social studies, literature, language arts, there's writing integrated in, which is really missing right now. And it's got a lot of great built-in strategies for struggling and also our learners who need extensions. I mentioned the importance of foundational skills. And what we found with CKLA is it's explicit, it's sequential, it's rewarding. It make, it makes sense. And then it's, it's integrated into content. So it has a place to land for students. This is a picture from one of our pilot teachers this fall. And this is really tiny to read. I apologize. But I, I just wanted to show how those foundational skills start in kindergarten and they build. And even in, in some programs, those foundational skills stop in second grade. They continue on and keep building a lot in third grade and also in fourth and fifth grade. So CKLA really has two really important components. I just talked about skills. So you're going to hear skills and knowledge. So the knowledge portions help students make connections. And what, one thing our committee liked is there's content in science and language arts and social studies and it's a whole units. It's just not a story here, a story there. And then it's, it spirals into the next grade and builds as well. And the feedback that we received at our community, reviews from our pilot teachers, it, it's goosebumps when you hear how excited kids are to read. It's very exciting.
Alyssa, can I just share an anecdote?
Please. Yes, please.
On Tuesday, when I was at Sage Crest, we were doing a unit on polio. And we started reading the story and at about the halfway mark, Natalie McKay came over and said, are you ready to move on to the next classroom? And I said, can we wait until the story's done? Because I needed to know what happened. It was super engaging. And everyone in the classroom, there was not a single person not engaged and not paying attention. Impressive.
I had a similar story of a, a teacher was sharing a pilot teacher and they had gotten a phone call from a parent saying, what are you doing different? My kid is now a reader. And that, that's a game-changing moment for a student and a parent. So thank you. These are the units that are selected. You can see their color, these are the knowledge strands. And I mentioned there's skills and there's knowledge. So, and they're color-coded either by science, social studies, or literature and the arts. So you can see there is a variety in all of the grade levels. Here's K one, two, and then three, four, five. A lot of these are also building background for when they'll see social studies and science in future grades. So it's like, oh yeah, I remember that. And that, that's building that knowledge for students. Okay, part of our process is looking at the research, checking with other districts, looking at studies to make sure that this is an evidence-based and research-backed product. And so it is on EdReports, which does third-party reviews. It's all green, which is something we look for on Ed Reports. There is also case study here in Washington State, Oak Harbor, with growth and the students using it. I also want to mention that we, we called a number of Kennewick districts, Dave Elkins, Jen, myself, we called these districts. And we were asking questions about implementation, training, what would you do differently? What's, what, what is helpful and the learning going on? We also got copies of their contracts. We, we used what we learned here in negotiations to make sure that we knew what we could ask for so we could get the best contract and negotiation possible. These are pictures of our pilot teachers using the materials. And I mentioned in my previous presentation, we wanted to look at our winter growth data. These are teachers that have been using it for six weeks. Many are choosing to continue to use it because they don't want to go back. And the growth is, is very positive in those pilot classrooms. Just a little bit of feedback from students who've been in the pilot, teachers, some of the parents as well. The next part of our process in an adoption like this is soliciting more community feedback. We had a preview evening on February 20th and shared, we had all of the pilot teachers, all of the grade level materials out for people to review, and we were available to answer questions. You have a copy of responses to those who chose to leave us a review. In front of you, it's that big paper. And then we wanted to really make sure people had an opportunity to see this material. So it was set up for two weeks across different locations, across the whole city. And then we also, we made a video, we gave out links, and this went out through Parent Square, so we really wanted to cover and make sure if someone wanted to learn about this material, it was available to them. So on that large sheet of paper you have, this is the summary of it. There were 52 responses that we gathered and you have all of them. We categorized them by if it was a staff with children in school, if it was a community member, and we didn't know if they had kids in school or not, or maybe, or a lot of them did, staff. And then we did have a few that chose not to put a name in the survey as well. And then we just categorized where their recommendations fell. So we had, of the 52, 47 said recommended without any reservations, four recommended with reservation, and one said they cannot recommend it. And you can see all those on the paper, what the comments were and the ratings. I mentioned that we felt we got a good negotiation. These big core adoptions are expensive. We did spend a little bit more than this on our math that we brought to you. I think our previous ELA was $3 million as well. So we chose to do an eight-year digital. They wouldn't do a ten-year. So we will have to come back later and renew it. And we wanted to do the consumable a little shorter just to see what we're using before we commit to the whole thing or if we need to replace anything. So we did shorten that one a little bit so when we renew it, we can change our amounts based on what's being used. We also are going to pay this amount over time. We're not going to do it all upfront, but we are going to like spread it out over a few years. In the packet and also in front of you, I welcome the board to access the materials. You should have a login. It looks a little bit different than this one, and I think once you log in, once it just starts opening up for you, but you should be able to get into anything that a student sees, a teacher sees, in all of the grade levels. You should have full access to the materials in there and you're welcome to look at them.
Yeah, so it's one of the handouts.
Oh, it's one of the handouts.
Yeah.
So that, this is one of our changes in presenting. We wanted to make sure the board had plenty of time to make this very important decision. So this is just part one and an overview of what we're looking at. This will go to the IMC tomorrow and then a final recommendation will come on March 26th. So I just wanted to, I'll go back a slide. I just wanted to see if there were any questions the board had for us or if there's anything you'd like us to bring on March 26th.
I will open it up for questions. First, I think a thank you is in order to the entire team, the staff that went through this process for 18 months, Jen, Dave, everybody involved. These aren't easy, so thank you so much. Also appreciate the budget aspect, how you guys utilize some other contracts to find a very good budget that fits with our needs and stuff, so thank you. And with that, I'll open it up if anybody has any questions.
I mean, I was going to say the same thing. Thank you, that seems like a lot of work, a lot of work. So like, I feel like you answered my question throughout the whole presentation, but I just want like a condensed answer, like, you know, if I asked you, how does this meet our kids', the kids' needs? Like short answer?
I'm not good at short answer, but I'll try. I think it's engaging to make kids want to read. I think it is also at a more rigorous level, so they will be learning more.
Grounded in the science of reading, I would.
Grounded in the science of reading. The science of reading is kind of like what their eyes are seeing, what's behind their eyes, you kind of explain that. Is that what you mean by the science of reading?
Yeah.
The skills needed and the knowledge.
Yes, yeah. You can set up to the mic, that's what they're going to say.
You got this, you got this. But it won't be, it'll be a passionate answer. So when we reference science of reading, we're referencing all of the component parts needed to truly develop a skilled reader. And so when we look at the science, we look at, okay, we have two major strands. We have the language side, the language comprehension, which you see in the upper rope, and then on the bottom part of that rope is those foundational skills, like cracking the code, learning how to read, right? How to letter sounds correspondence and things like that. And all of that is needed, every single component part of that, of that rope is needed in a resource to support all kids in developing them into skilled readers. And CKLA is well laid out. If you looked, if you heard about what Alyssa was saying, knowledge, skills, that's exactly how this resource is divided. Like that's how it's laid out in alignment with that rope.
So then like, let's, just can you briefly talk about the teacher side of it? Like, how are they coming to know this, understand this, teach it? Because that's really, that's really what all learning comes down to, right? It's like the teacher's ability to connect with the students, right? So like, how does, how's the teacher?
So we've been doing training to build up to this for the last, over a year with our teachers to learn more about the science of reading. We did a lot with our adoption committee as well to help them better understand it. And then we will have more training in June, August, and all next year as well.
Is that in the PLCs or is it?
The training is actually, you know, district-provided professional learning where people come to training sessions. And then I think it gets reinforced as if, for example, if we were a grade level team and we were all using the materials and we're helping each other, you know, and looking at how our students are doing through the professional learning community work and all of that. But they're really talking about the training that'll be provided to teachers so they're equipped to use the materials.
Yeah, I'm referring to that. And then, is that, that's mandatory, all the teachers have to come to that? That's?
It's outside of our contract days and we are in such a great district, we get great attendance at them.
Teachers are compensated to come.
Yeah.
And we will, we've already been talking about, on the off chance that there's a teacher who can't come to one of the trainings, how are we going to ensure that they're?
Make up sessions.
So, you know, Dave has been instrumental this year in helping ensure all the teachers are able to use the math materials and providing support out at buildings. We've been talking about like that similar ongoing model. It's not a one-time training and then they're done.
Yeah.
It's ongoing professional learning and support from the district and in the building to ensure that like implementation is well-supported.
And it's going to be hard. It's hard to get new materials, but seeing how our pilot teachers had their reactions, hearing a teacher say, I love teaching reading again, those pieces are going to help us with training and implementation.
So when Brittany was saying, maybe this is a question I should be asking Brittany, but when Brittany was saying that she wanted to hear the end of the story, is that, it's like the stories are just, like whoever selected the stories just did a better job? Just picked better stories, just more dynamic stories? I mean, is that?
I think that's part of it, but getting that knowledge piece and helping kids build that, they're hungry, they want to learn it. They, having nonfiction reading, like they want to learn those things and the spark and making connection, you can see it and feel it. And it's missing right now.
What was so compelling about this story?
Well, I mean, it was about a girl who at the age of nine contracted polio and she was, she wasn't doing well, so she had to go to a specialized hospital, she had to be away from everybody, she had to be in an oxygen tent, she was, she was having a hard time, she couldn't swallow, so she was having a hard time getting liquids and she hadn't had anything to eat for over a week. And so her mother and father asked her, what is it that you want to eat? And she said, I want a milkshake. But she wasn't allowed to have milk products because it would increase the amount of phlegm and mucus, which were two of the vocabulary words that the kids were learning. And so her parents decided that they were going to go and get her a milkshake anyway. And then they come back and the nurse says, I'm not going to be a part of this. If you're doing it, it's at your own risk. And she was able to drink the milkshake and it's the first thing she'd eaten over a week and her fever broke right after that. And, I mean, it was compelling. I remember all the detail of it, it's been three days. And then the activity afterwards was the students went and they took each character in the story and they went through and they had to talk about whether or not they were just the different, they talked about the difference between physical attributes and, I don't know, personality attribute, some other kind of attribute. And so they were talking about whether or not they were worried or if they were concerned or if they were, was the father being reckless or was he being caring? So a lot of that, just the higher listening and looking at it from different perspectives. From one perspective, the father was being reckless, from another, he was being very caring. So. That kind of, and when I walked in, they had, just a few weeks ago, had finished, I don't know if there's, if the volcanoes fall into the geology section? Okay, there were three different kids in the classroom that told me they wanted to be geologists. So they were into it. So they had just done a volcano lesson, they had these big posters outside of their classrooms on Mount St. Helens and Mount Vesuvius and a couple of other volcanoes I had never heard of that had erupted and they'd done these big projects talking. I don't know how it related to the learning or to the reading component, I didn't get into that, but it was easy to see that's actually what the girl outside the classroom was telling me about. She was walking me through each of the volcanoes and what she liked about them. Yeah. So, I don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So for me, real quick, so I reached out to all the pilot programs in the district and got feedback from all of them and it was great feedback. I just want to take a quick second. So some of the student feedback came with that. It's fun because you learn and don't get bored. With Journeys, we didn't learn many new words, but with Amplify, we learned new and higher words for different reading levels. With Journeys, we almost only read, but with Amplify, we get to do activities with it. One of the teachers said Amplify CKLA builds student knowledge through a series of lessons over a course of months rather than, quote, "skill and drill" each week. Students were fully engaged and loved the content. One of them that really stood out to me, and I'll end with this one, this is from a parent, says, "My fourth grader came home, comes home weekly telling me about all the things that she has learned in ELA. Her discussions are so in-depth and full of details. The content is exciting and leaves her wanting more. Often she comes home asking to go online to research more about the topic that she was just learning during ELA time. The topics of the lesson have been brought up at our dinner tables multiple times. This sparks an entire conversation between our entire family, creating a space for our family to have meaningful discussions. I cannot speak for all families, only mine, but this curriculum content has reached more than just my student learning in the class. It has gone beyond school and has helped enrich our family time." So there's just tons of feedback, everything that I saw from the folks were positive. There were two, two things that came back from a, like a feedback perspective. One, Mike had mentioned the training, so we're doing full training for everyone there. They're going to have the opportunity to do that, which will help with them understanding the curriculum. And then there was a couple, people mentioned pacing might be a little fast. And so if it's not on your radar, this is what I heard. So just something to think about as we go through to.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you bet.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, we'll be back in a couple weeks.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's see, that ends our reports and discussions. Just kidding, we have a legislative update. Dr. Pierce will share, share some of that with us.
Okay, well, this will be pretty brief because Brittany did such a good job of giving a legislative update and a few things have been mentioned, but just briefly, we're about halfway through session, so this is a good time to give a status update and helps to inform us of maybe where there's needed additional advocacy and work to be done. So it's week nine, it's midway point of the 2025 session. As Mike mentioned, the legislators are working very hard. There have been 1,800 bills introduced to this session. Many of them are no longer, but there are about 730 that are remaining in play. Just a bit of timeline, today's day 59 of session. Today's also the House of Origin cutoff, so like no, nothing else coming out, it's now going to the other chamber. This isn't so much a legislative session item, but it's important to note that there's an updated revenue forecast set to be released on March 18th. So that's going to help inform direction moving forward. And then the last day of session is scheduled for April 27th and hopefully they will end on time. So board, as you know, every year develops legislative priorities and updates those, meets with legislators along with me prior to session to ensure that our local legislators understand our district priorities. And this year, like districts across the state in terms of funding, we're really focusing on what everyone is referring to as the big three. Maintenance supplies and operating costs or ENSOC. Tom mentioned ENSOC during his budget presentation. Also special education and transportation. So that's really the focus of my update. And I'm going to go quickly because as I said, Brittany seriously did a really good job of encapsulating kind of where things are, but unfortunately, the transportation bills are just dead, just was not a priority for this legislative session. So what remains of the big three areas are ENSOC and special education. So ENSOC, I want to give a shout out to Damon Steele from Wassa because I'm, along with a number of other superintendents across the state, part of a weekly legislative and finance committee that meets online and Dan does a really nice job of giving us updates. And so I'm borrowing some slides from the last update with Dan earlier this week. And he shows, for example, on Senate Bill 5192 with ENSOC, the amendments that were made by the Ways and Means Committee and then the amendments that were further made on the Senate floor. And so I will go through all of this. Some of it's about categorizing things differently, but you can see that like the original amounts have been drastically reduced. So the bills that are remaining are, you know, not really reflective of what the original hope was. And with 5192 in particular, I just wanted to highlight that, like, it's likely, well, it's just not, it's not what we were hoping for in its original form, but it's still alive. There's also House Bill 1338 that is ENSOC. And again, you can see how things like a 20% adjustment is now down to 3%. So Tom mentioned that 3%. And so really now what's being discussed is very different from what we were originally hoping for and what we need. So it's a little discouraging and disheartening, but at least the ENSOC bills are still alive. Special ed bills are still alive. The House bill was originally 1310 Funding Bill, it's dead. The House bill was originally 1310 Funding Bill, it's dead. And now House Bill 1357 is in play. There's some minor increases to multipliers there, and then some pilot programs and training supports. But it's not looking like that original funding version either. That's the House bill. The Senate bill, you can see, again, tracked the amendments that have been made along the way. So those original multipliers of like 1.63 or 1.528, you know, are now down to 1.32. It's just a lot of changes to what these bills originally looked like and what they look like now. In this particular one, actually it was 1338. There was, I want to go back to that one real quick. Well, that's the Emsoc bill, I'm sorry I'm being confusing here. I'll just keep moving on. That, it's just, and the other thing, I send you the Twio every, every week, this week in Olympia, and he goes through and really details and explains all of this really well. But it's, it's not very light reading, right? I think that the net-net is that the need, like, these are underfunded areas statewide, and the underfunding is in the billions. And the need is so much greater than what's being talked about at this point in session. It really is pretty discouraging. You know, the governor, I mean, there are financial realities. The governor has a plan to save like $4 billion. I mean, there's needing to be cuts statewide. But he has stated publicly that there won't be cuts to K-12, or that they're going to maintain K-12 funding. But I think it's important though to know, we heard some cuts potentially being talked about tonight. So, you know, that's, maybe it's not a cut to the allocation of funding, but it's certainly a cut to a program, and a funded program, the National Board Certified Teacher Program, and cuts that would, that teachers would feel in their pockets. When they talk about maintaining K-12 funding, if they fund us at current maintenance levels, that's a cut, right? If, if the cost of things are going up at this rate, and they're going to continue to fund us here, they can maybe talk about, we're going to maintain funding levels, but it's really a cut. So that's, and how do we absorb that? It has to be absorbed by local funding. So that means what we need to seek from our local community through levy funding has to increase, or we have to make pretty significant cuts within the district. So that's really the big problem. We're not having big financial challenges right now in this district, right? We've done a really good job of being very conservative and, and, you know, all of the things. Other districts have too. And other districts are really experiencing a lot of financial challenges because there's just a reality of we're not getting enough money from the state to continue to operate at our current levels. So even when they, I just want to say, like, as we go into this next half of session, when we're hearing things about no cuts to K-12, or when, you know, they're talking about maintenance-level funding, maintenance-level funding without ads, or without adequate ads, are really cuts. That's what I would like to say.
So Brittany, I know you're doing a lot with the legislation stuff. It's crazy. What did you say, 1,800?
Down to 700.
There was like 1,800 bills filed. I read at one point, like, there's actually like a state law in Idaho that you can only file seven bills as a legislator. And they were comparing it to a legislator here who had filed like 253 bills for this session. It's absolutely crazy that there's that many filed. Could, could you potentially look into a couple bills? I mean, there's a lot of terrible bills in the legislature. We've got a $15 billion deficit, they're going to be cutting a lot of money. But besides the funding pieces, I'm just curious about Senate bill, three Senate bills, 5179, 5177, and 5123. I think collectively across the state, a lot of people are not supporting those bills because of what they would do to local control. I'm just curious about those. And then is House Bill 1296, is that the one about rental rights they're trying to gut?
It's going on right now.
Takeaway here, yeah.
Yeah, so I actually had Mike clarify this for me just before we started. So there's actually a bill, a Senate bill and a House bill that each addressed the Parent Bill of Rights. The one from the Senate has already passed, I think it's 5181, 5181, I can't remember, something like that. It passed quite some time ago. The one that they're discussing in the House tonight, and I'm sure there may have been an update on it already. I mean, it will pass. They, each House has amended it differently because today is a cutoff to pass your own House. They will then swap bills and they discuss them. And so there will be some, there will be some amending of 2081 coming out of the session. I'm more familiar with the Senate bill amendment, amended version than I am the House bill amended version. And Mike just said that they're spitting amendments out on the floor as we're speaking. So I don't know that we'll have a good idea of what House bill, I can't remember the number now, 1296 looks like until this evening.
Is the, is the House bill the one where they're trying to change the notification rule? So if, if there's an issue at school, an assault of something like that, they're trying to say, "We don't have to notify parents immediately, we can have 48 hours to do that." Is that what they're trying? Because the Parents Bill of Rights required immediate notification.
So I don't know about the House bill. But do you know, in the Senate bill, in the original Senate bill, they did amend it to be 48 hours so that the district could wait 48 hours before notifying parents. But then in the engrossed Senate bill, so they amended it again in committee, and they removed that and moved it back to, well, they said as soon as possible. It's not immediate, but it's not 48 hours anymore in the engrossed Senate bill version. I don't know about the House bill version.
Okay. Yeah, again, I could go on, a bunch of terrible bills.
I love to hear your.
There's spending time changing bills.
And I'm familiar with them, I hadn't been, they're not related to education.
No.
That's why I wasn't bringing them up in my thing.
No, curious what you can find out.
I'll send you some info.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. If we have nothing else with the legislative update, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business. Our next meeting agenda, we have, of course, the preliminary budget, 2526, asset preservation, capital, projects update, recommendation for the K-5 ELA material, and also recommendation for K-12 physical education material. Those will be up next on the agenda. At this time, the board will move into executive session for the next 30 minutes to discuss a legal issue. And after that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.